I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. On our agenda, I'd like to move item four on the regular agenda up to number two after our, to have after our first second reading that we have today. So with that, could I get a motion, please?
Will you repeat that, please, Madam Chair?
I'm moving item four up above item two.
So move.
Okay.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second? Chair, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Move on to our consent agenda and consider a motion to approve.
I so move.
Second.
Thank you. Chair, will you call the roll?
Poppins, did he do the second?
I did.
Schmidt.
Or, excuse me.
Schmidt got the second.
Schmidt did.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Go ahead for our opportunity for public comment. If there's any folks in the audience that want to come up and address the board, now would be the time. If not, we'll move on to any commissioner reports. Are there any commissioner reports?
On Thursday, Madam Chair, Representative Otten has his proposal in front of the state legislature, or taxation committee, to talk about giving counties the option of having a sales tax up to one cent. And the way that Representative Otten has written this is that this would have to go back to the taxpayers of the county to approve that. And I think that I, we owe him a debt of gratitude for bringing that up because counties, as you know, across the state are always strapped for money. So this would be a way in which counties could accumulate funds of money to take care of extra obligations like building for courtrooms or jails or other activities and stuff like that. So it's on Thursday, so I would hope that if you can't make it up there, that you could send an email to that committee, which I'll give to you, and write to them and tell them something about our story and our need for additional revenue to take care of our obligations as we go into looking at building courtroom space and possibly a jail. And I think that Representative Otten, I've had email correspondence with him, would appreciate that. Personally, I intend to go testify in front of that. It's going to face an uphill battle because there are very strong anti-tax feelings from the governor, from the municipal league, from the economic development. But I still respect enough for that individual to want to try that. I'll give him his due and support him in that regard. So I hope you can take the time, send an email, tell the Lincoln County story, and let's see what happens.
Thank you for that. Any other commissioners have a report they'd like to make? If not, we'll move on to regular business. First item on the agenda, second reading and second public hearing. Chair, are you going to read that or just Toby going to handle it?
Nope, I guess. I will. Toby's not here. This is the second public hearing for an ordinance on Lincoln County, South Dakota, amending the 2009 revised zoning ordinance for Lincoln County by rezoning property legally described as Lot 1, Dakota Still Edition, East 1/2, North 1/4, Section 31, Township 97 North, R 49 West, from A1 Agriculture District to I-1 Light Industrial District. Location is 29029 477th Avenue.
What, if Toby's not here, what's the status of this initially? I was told that perhaps it was polled or do we have any information about that? Is Leonard here?
I had an email from Toby yesterday saying that Leonard wanted to pull the application.
As he can be?
Can we reach out to Toby, please, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, he hasn't communicated that directly to you or?
Nope.
Well, we need some clarification on that then. So with that, we're going to move on, try and get some clarification on that public hearing. So with that, I'd ask for a motion to go into executive session.
So move, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Chair, will you call the roll?
Commissioner?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. So do you want to check on that and see what?
Yeah, I'm trying to call him right now.
All right, thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Chair, you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. We'll circle back to item one on our agenda. What did we find out?
Good morning.
Morning.
It was about 5:30 last night, the applicant withdrew the application, so there was no application before you this morning.
So we can just?
No action.
Take it off?
Okay. Don't need to do anything? Nope.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we will move on to our public hearing to consider an application for a temporary on-sale malt beverage license. Is that Wendy?
Hello.
Oh, hi Wendy.
Yep, so this is a temporarily, temporary malt beverage license for a third annual raising the roof fundraiser that we have done the last two years, and so we're looking to do it again March 26. It'll be a live and silent auction and meal, so, and it's 18 and older.
All right. And you said that was March 26?
Yep.
All right. Is there anyone here to speak? This is a public hearing, so is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? Anyone who would like to speak against it? If not, I'd ask for a motion.
Madam Chair, move for approval.
Second.
Thank you. Chair, you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks Wendy. We'll move on to item number three on our agenda, which is a public hearing to consider an application to acquire a medical marijuana license. And who's going to tee that up for us? Phil, were you going to do that?
Which one do we have?
I'm on number three. Dalton Grimias?
Okay. They had applied. We've been through the application at this point in time. They've met all of the requirements. We've went ahead and done a complete background check. There's no issues, so we don't see any reason not to grant the license at this point in time. So now we're just at the public hearing.
All right. This is our public hearing. Is the applicant here? Do you want to come up and kind of tell us what your plan is?
Sure.
Just state your name and address, if you would, please.
Dalton Grimias, Brandon, South Dakota. Goal is to start a grow operation there outside of T to supply medical marijuana to our dispensaries and possibly additional dispensaries. We'll have a dispensary and a manufacturing sector there as well, but it's in a real industrial area, so the dispensary probably won't be a major presence. Manufacturing would be something we want to get into after we have a product available.
All right. Any of the commissioners have any questions for Mr. Grimias? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone who'd like to come and speak in favor of the application? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to the application? If not, we've heard the request. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I would move for approval.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you for that. Any further discussion? If not, Chair, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Motion carries.
Go off.
We'll move on to item five on our agenda, which is another public hearing on an application to acquire a medical marijuana license.
Thank you. The application, all the requirements have been filled out and met. Staff's been through all of that. We've been through the criminal background check as well, and at this point in time, it's appropriate for the commission to address and hold their public hearing.
Thank you. Is the applicant here? Good morning Ned.
Good morning.
Can you state your address, please?
Ned Horsted, 27058 South Southeastern Avenue, Sioux Falls.
Thank you. Can you kind of run us through what your plan is?
Yeah, we've got a, and I've got a site map, if it's helpful, but plans for a 35,000 square foot building that would be a cultivation facility as well as a product manufacturing facility, dispensary onsite as well. This would be right off of the I-29 Highway 18 exit. Had a nice meeting with the sheriff a couple of weeks ago. He didn't have any issues with our security plan or anything that I presented to him. Talked to the fire chiefs of both Worthing and Lennox, and they had no issue with this either. So just real quick, I'll kind of run through the team that we've got here. I'm no stranger to you all talking about this issue down here and in Sioux Falls, so appreciate you having me once again. My business partners are back here. I've got Kyle Pesca, who I grew up with, born and raised in Harrisburg. Melissa Metley, who actually wrote I Am 26, the medical law. Been working with her about six years on the campaign side of things. And Liz Tiger, who actually lives in Spearfish. Liz would do a lot of the remote compliance work for us, keeping eye, keeping, keeping an eye on the seat-to-sale tracking and all of that. And our group's been helping others get their license in the state as well, so that's about it.
All right, thank you for that. Any of the board members have questions for Mr. Horsted?
Ned, you said you had something here with you that you could show us?
Yeah, just a site map.
Sure, could take a look at it.
There's an overhead here. I can't remember how this works.
Yeah, look up. Put it underneath that camera.
There you go.
There you go.
Sweet. Okay. I don't know if it's able to be zoomed in here, but let me actually do this to make it true north. So down here is Highway 18. This is basically I-29. You are way over here in Canton, so it's just this lot north here. So the 35,000 square foot building is going to be where we'll have the cultivation facility. And then this corner here, little piece that hangs out, will be 5,000 square foot where we'll have a commercial kitchen to help make products for patients. The proposed, this says 8,000 square foot building. We're sort of back and forth on the exact size, but that's where we're planning on housing the dispensary.
So access would be from where then?
The, this is the Canton exit, like right here, right next to the Department of Transportation ground.
So is that 471st Street or Avenue or?
Yep. 441st, or 471st Avenue is on the east side there, and then that truck stop is like right here.
Oh, okay.
Any other commissioners have questions? If not, thank you Ned. You can have a seat.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the application? If not, we've heard the request. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, move to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you for that. Any further discussion? If not, Chair, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, move on to item six on our agenda. Commissioner Aaron's, cite your item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I currently presently represent County Commission District One, which includes Springdale Township and the Spring Creek area of our county. The, which includes parts of Lake Alvin as well as what is currently called the Spring Creek Country Club. And there's a golf course out there, and right now that golf course has been purchased by the Game Fish and Parks Foundation. And that's a private nonprofit group that purchases property with the intent of transferring sort of recreational and outdoor properties eventually to the state of South Dakota through the Game Fish and Parks Department. And for those of you who are not familiar with what's going on out there right now is Game Fish and Parks Foundation is considering a transfer of that property to the Game Fish and Parks Department. So GF&amp;P is soliciting public opinion right now as to what should happen to the Spring Creek Country Club and golf course. And Game Fish and Parks has started out with an initial proposal, and what they would like to do out there is they would like to turn the golf course into a campground. And they've come out with various proposals and scenarios regarding the size of the campground and the location and how many people would be able to camp there. And obviously, that would be a dramatic departure from what the property is currently used for and what it's zoned for right now. And the folks in my district, especially those people who have purchased properties and have their residences located along the golf course, have taken exception to these, this proposal by Game Fish and Parks. And so they're very concerned about it because obviously, usually the biggest investment a person makes in their life is their home. And when they decide where they want to live, you know, there's a variety of factors that go into that. But certainly, these people out there did not decide to build houses around a campground. They decided to build houses around a golf course. Game Fish and Parks Department is currently soliciting public opinion as to what should occur out there. In fairness to GF&amp;P, no decisions have been made yet. I, myself, Toby Brown, as well as the regional director of GF&amp;P, had a meeting recently where I communicated the concerns that the members of the public, including the neighbors, had about GF&amp;P's proposal. And it was a very productive meeting, and it was a very candid meeting. And in light of that meeting, the folks who live out there wanted to be able to make a presentation of their side of the story to this county commission. And so that's what brings us to why we're here today, is the members of the Spring Creek Homeowners Associations have banded together, and they would like to give us a presentation as to what's going on out there. So if they want to step up to the mic and the podium, they can do that.
Good morning. Go ahead and introduce yourself, name and address, please.
I'm Barb Koopman. I, and this is Phil Kaitan. We're both homeowners, and we are located in Harrisburg, obviously County of Lincoln. And our properties as homeowners are directly adjacent to the golf course. I am on the north side of Spring Creek Homeowners Association, and Phil is on the east side, which is Spring Creek East Homeowners Association. So as Joel has mentioned, we're here today on behalf of the Spring Creek community, which includes 79 homeowners that represent over 153 residents in the five neighborhoods that surround the Spring Creek Golf Course. We're here to request that the Lincoln County Commissioners consider and act upon a resolution in opposition to the efforts that have been put before the homeowners by the Game Fish and Parks of South Dakota to destroy the golf course and replace it with the campground. We'd like to thank Commissioner Joel Aaron's to, for prior to this meeting of including the documents that we submitted to you, which obviously are included for your review. There's a lot of information there you'll want to go through at your own time. Instead of going through each of the PowerPoint presentation, we're choosing to just verbally present some information or verbal summary of our, of our concerns and our requests to you at this time. So I'd like to give you just a little background and history. Joel touched on some of that already. Since 1985, the South Dakota Parks and Wildlife Foundation has supported wildlife enhancement and park development activities for the South Dakota Department of Game Fish and Parks. The foundation's mission is to solicit and encourage support to preserve and protect South Dakota's natural resources, its outdoor heritage, and provide expanded recreation and education opportunities. So in 2015, as Joel mentioned, the foundation acquired the 18-hole Spring Creek Golf Course, which consists of over 162 acres. This is from between Good Earth State Park and Lake Alvin State Park. The foundation will transfer the ownership of the golf course to the Game Fish and Parks in January of 2025. At the time of the sale, Game Fish and Parks and foundation representatives communicated to the homeowners that the golf course beyond 2025 would become a park, returning the grounds back to natural grasses with walking paths and trails. On October 26 of 2020, so there was some time in between there, I know the GF&amp;P was trying to get all their stuff together as far as what happened with the sale, they presented the first draft or a concept to representatives of the Spring Creek East Homeowners Association and Spring Creek North Homeowners Association in two separate meetings. These meetings were held separately again, and they only included two of the five surrounding neighborhoods or the homeowners association. The draft at that time and what was placed before us reflected a campground that could have 75 to 110 campers, trailers, RVs, and tents on land that is part of the Blood Run National Historic Landmark. There were also constructed cabins that were reflected as part of the plan. The Game Fish and Park representatives at that time expressed a desire to be good neighbors and to work in partnership with the residents of the associations to create a plan that is beneficial to the public and to the residents of Spring Creek community. However, South Dakota Game Fish and Parks has not been open and transparent with their communications. Game Fish and Parks has not addressed the core issues of the campground's negative impact on our neighborhood, and there has been quite a lengthy list of concerns that have been presented to them, of which to date, they have not responded back with any comments. Game Fish and Parks has not incorporated any of our concerns into the campground plans. They have not considered the negative impact on Lincoln County. The Game Fish and Park representatives continue to push for a campground that is inconsistent with the mission of Game Fish and Parks and the foundation. And this was true up to two public meetings that they had on December 7 of 2021. The same concepts, nothing had changed. Were laid before us. The campground was still there, and that was the center or the focal point of their presentation. The Game Fish and Parks website clearly states that their mission and their brand is "We serve and connect people and families to the outdoors through effective management of our state parks." Our mission, our vision is to conserve our state's outdoor heritage, to enhance the quality of life for current and future generations. At our core, we provide incredible opportunities and experiences that keep our customers coming back to the outdoors. Game Fish and Parks wants to destroy a popular golf course out there in Spring Creek, which directly conflicts with Game Fish and Parks' vision, mission, and brand. They want to plant, build a campground within and adjacent to the boundaries of a national historic landmark, which would be an insult to the, the native culture, the Oneida people. And replacing a golf course with a campground does reduce the outdoor recreation, which conflicts with the mission of the foundation.
Game Fish and Parks has publicly stated a desire for Spring Creek Golf Course to be efficiently used for recreational use. The golf course is already efficiently used for outdoor recreation. Over 25,000 rounds of golf are played each year at the golf course by an estimated 1,200-plus golfers. In addition, two high schools and 60 to 70 corporate sponsors use the golf course each year for fundraisers that support charities in the greater Sioux Falls area. The Spring Creek Golf Course is an outdoor recreational opportunity that supports the future growth of Lincoln County and over 275,000 people in the greater Sioux Falls area who comprise one-third of South Dakota's population. The Spring Creek Golf Course is already an efficient use of outdoor recreational land. The destruction of this golf course and replacing the golf course with a campground will not increase outdoor recreational opportunities. These opportunities will be diminished because the remaining golf courses in the greater Sioux Falls area do not have the capacity to absorb 25,000 rounds of golf each year. If GSP's plan is to destroy the golf course, the construction of, of the campground could damage artifacts that are a significant part of the archaeological heritage of the Oneida tradition peoples. A new campground would partially be located within their largest cultural site discovered to date in the upper Midwest. Construction activities to build the campground could and would jeopardize the sanctity of the Blood Run National Historic Landmark and would be an unnecessary breach of trust with the Oneida. GFP also wants to expand Good Earth State Park through this endeavor because it's partially contiguous to the golf course. Good Earth State Park is on the southeast corner of Sioux Falls, adjacent to Lincoln County, which was the 13th fastest-growing county in the United States during the last decade. Lincoln County's housing developments and population growth are expected to increase 27% by 2030. Over the next 20 years, over 250 homes will likely be constructed within two miles of the golf course. These new homes will increase our neighborhood's population by over 700 people, with new construction anticipated to be in excess of $200 million and at least $2.8 million in new property taxes. Many of these people will be golfers who will want to enjoy the opportunity to play golf at a local golf course. The Spring Creek community continues to strongly oppose GF&amp;P's intent to destroy a popular local golf course and replace it with a campground. Homeowners do not want a campground in the middle of our residential neighborhoods that consist of these 79 homes and over 150 residents. We do not want to look out our front doors or our backyards to see a combination of RVs, campers, tents, cabins, dump stations, or picnic tables. Homeowners do not want to pay property, higher property taxes for the costs that Lincoln County will incur for roads, paths, security, and emergency services to the campground. Homeowners are concerned that our property values will be negatively impacted. Homeowners are concerned that privacy will be violated and that security will be at risk for people in the neighborhood. Homeowners do not want to fight the additional traffic that would result from campers entering and leaving the campground each day. In addition, there is concern for walkers, bicyclists, and people of all ages who continue to frequent the area on a daily basis.
The Spring Creek community strongly believes that the following permanent restrictions should be placed in perpetuity on any future land use, use for the existing golf course. That's a daytime use only as a golf course, that there would be centralized parking with limited large vehicle parking spaces. There's no motorized vehicles allowed, for instance, snowmobiles, four-wheelers, motorbikes. No overnight camping, which includes no campers, RVs, trailers, tents, et cetera. No dump stations, no hunting activities, including archery, and a 300-foot buffer, tree-lined or privacy screen, which would exist on the northeast and the south areas, including a buffer for the homeowners whose property lies to the north of 271st and east of 480th where their land connects with state-owned property. The Spring Creek community The Spring Creek community strongly believes that the South Dakota Game Fish and Parks should immediately discontinue all plans to include any camping facilities now and in perpetuity on any portion of the golf course. Spring Creek community also believes that South Dakota Game Fish and Parks' future plan for the golf course should continue what has been in place today, a longstanding, high-quality recreation area for daytime-only golf enjoyment that can continue to be utilized by the public for generations to come. On behalf of the homeowners, we ask that the Lincoln County Commissioners support our opposition to Game Fish and Parks' intent to destroy the Spring Creek Golf Course and replace, or I'll say plop, a campground in an area that makes absolutely no sense, leave it a golf course. Thank you for considering our request. We're happy to answer any questions at this time.
Barb, that, is that already, um, zoned as a rec area, correct? The golf course? Thank you for your presentation today.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna move on to item seven on our agenda.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
I have a question for the presenter for Commissioner Aaron's. Back in two thousand twenty, I think I took notes that you were told they were going to turn this into a park or a grassed area, or you were told that upon the time they purchased this thing, that to go in and make this more or less an extension of Good Earth or, uh, that kind of stuff. That was what they publicly said, and then somewhere along the line, the dialogue changed, so now we're gonna put a-
Barb, if you're gonna talk, can you come up to the mic so anybody listening can hear you?
I'm just, I'm just curious as to, uh, if you were told one thing to begin with, which kind of explained maybe why they wanted to buy a golf course or something, and then they switched gears on you, and now, is there, was there any explanation of that as to why or rationale?
Um, there's been many conversations, of course, and information that comes from different people. I think from our understanding, and we've pressed on that because in 2015, and any public media, um, uh, newsprint or air, you know, commented that it would be returned to natural grasses and that type of thing, and as homeowners, we were fine with that. When the concepts were laid on the table as campground, you know, we did the same thing. Where did this come from? And some comments have been shared that it was discussed as possibly a campground back then. But obviously, at the time of the sale, there was only one homeowners' association that was involved in any dialogue or any conversation or any contact with the State of South Dakota Foundation. None of the other four homeowners' associations were involved, where I know in my association, we again had a laundry list. They chose not to want to meet with us until post-sale. I think there was perhaps a concern for some raised things. Well, the right thing would have been, if you want to be a good neighbor, would have been to just get together with everyone, let us know what you're intending to do and get our input. As I communicated earlier, a lot of times their meetings are held very separately. They don't want to pull us all together, I think. There's a lot of opposition, but you know what? You need to be transparent, you need to listen to what our concerns are, and you, you need to make an attempt to come back and at least respond. If you don't know, you don't know, but the big bottom line here, you know, i- is the campground. We don't want the campground there, and we want to work with them.
Well, and I'm gonna, I'm just gonna stop here, and maybe I'm wrong. I mean, I don't see a campground as a permissive use in that area.
Exactly.
So if they're going to apply for something, they've got to come here in front of the board, um, and get those permits and those approvals. So you've provided us with a lot of information, and I thank you for that, but I think it's premature at this time because there hasn't been an application made for us to consider, and certainly the GFP's not here to represent what their plans are. So I'm gonna end the conversation for today, but thank you for the information.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, just to, just to answer your question there, I did speak with Toby about this, and it occurred during our meeting with GFNP, but, uh, because it is a state-owned property and because Lincoln County is a sub, or, you know, is a, and, independent, or, excuse me, is a subdivision of the state of South Dakota, the state does not need to seek zoning approval or submit any permits or applications from the county, and they can use their own sovereignty in order to do whatever they want to on the property, consistent with federal and state law. So the point that they're making here is that, um, they don't need Lincoln County's permission to put a campground out there. So that's why they're trying to, to inform and educate us because they, they want the public, as well as this commission, to know that, uh, the state doesn't have to apply for a permit, they can just build it, and, you know, of course, they want this commission to be opposed to that.
Okay, I, that, that provides some clarity for me, thank you for that. All right, we're gonna move on to item seven on our agenda. We've got a sports raffle. Wendy, are you still online?
I am.
You want to handle that item?
Sure, um, all the information I have for that was included in the package, so I don't have that all off the top of my head right now.
Okay.
But Shooting Sports, um, wants to, um, do a raffle so they can use the funds they garner from that raffle to purchase equipment. And I think they're looking at starting it, um, towards the end of February and drawing, um, by the time Shooting Sports is done in April.
So what do you need from us, Wendy? If anything?
This is basically just to let you know that they want to do it, um, because, uh, we're not in the municipality, so we, uh, they can't go to like the city of Lenox to let them know about this.
Okay.
Um, and I don't believe they're doing it as a statewide raffle, because if it was a statewide raffle, they would need to go through the Secretary of State, but it's not, so, this is basically an informational thing, I think.
All right, just to bring some attention to that. All right, anything else on that, Wendy?
Not unless you guys have any other questions.
Yeah, does anybody have questions? I'm not hearing, I'm not hearing any, Wendy. Good luck with your raffle.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to item eight on our agenda, um, asking for board action on Lincoln County Fairgrounds Foundation lease agreement. Mr. Golden?
Thank you. The Fairgrounds Foundation is asking for a lease so they can construct a, uh, a facility out on the four-H grounds. The lease would be for five years. They have the option of terminating it once they have the building built, and then the building will become the property of Lincoln County. There is, the lease is for one dollar, so they can construct the facility. The county does reserve the rights when it comes to approval of the plans prior to any construction out there. It also grants them naming rights, subject to the approval of the commission before that takes place. Um, and finally, since this is going to be the foundation, it's a private entity, they would have to go ahead and pay for building permits. I've spoken with Toby, he asked me at this point in time to ask you if you'd be willing to waive those fees for the building permit, um, so we could just take care of it all at the same time. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions? If not, you've heard the request, is there a motion?
I would so move that we grant this request and that we do not charge them or waive the, uh, building permit for the four-H folks.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, any further discussion? If not, Sherry, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes, motion carries. And then we've got an agreement to consider with Helms and Associates for an airport project. Sean, Sherry, do you want, do you have any, I almost called you Sean, uh, what do you got on that?
Um, the only thing I have is it's, uh, the Agreement for Professional Services for the Airport Project, AIP three forty-six zero zero seventy zero two zero two, N E twenty-two, with Helms. DOT and the auditors have reviewed and found the agreement to be acceptable.
Thank you, what is the, what's the term of the agreement? Like the length? Do you know?
I have no idea. I can look it up. I think it's just for that project, the specific project, but I will double-check.
I believe, Madam Chair, isn't it, um, the, the northern part, fifty-two-hundred square yards of, of reconstruction, or?
I'm just look, I'm looking at that. Yeah, if you have the answer to the question, feel free to jump in.
Yeah, it's for the North Apron Reconstruction. Um, the construction work includes grading, disposal of excess materials, sub-base course, aggregate base course, HMA paving, underdrain, piping, pavement marking, topsoil seeding, and other items that's related to construction.
Madam, Madam Chair.
Thank you, go ahead.
Uh, fortunately, I did not read the document, um, I'll admit to that, but under normal pretense, it would be to the term in which, till the project is completed, so.
All right, thank you.
And I'm hopefully assuming that is the same on this.
We've heard the request, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, any further discussion? If not, Sherry, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
For a second?
I'm sorry.
Sure.
We get it both twice now?
Indeed, indeed.
Commissioner Landin, I'm sorry, writing and talking is not my cue.
Yeah, yes.
Say, will, will this, will this help, uh, facilitate, uh, the getting of a, uh, landing, or an instrument landing?
No.
This won't, well?
Not directly, no.
No, okay, yeah, all right.
All right, and then we have item ten on our agenda, our highway superintendent. Good morning, Terry.
Good morning, so, um, I have before you, I've got some information from, uh, working with ARC, Inc., um, on, uh, some spacing needs, uh, for additional offices out at the highway shop. Uh, the attachment, it should be in the, uh, it's in your, uh, it's on the agenda packet. Uh, the addition is they're, they're looking at, uh, twenty-four by thirty-two addition, uh, which comes up to just under seven-hundred-and-eighty square foot. Uh, and again, part of that is, uh, gonna be two office spaces, a conference room, uh, and then a workstation area, an open area, uh, for a possible future, um, CAD tech, um, engineer tech person.
So on the office spaces that you have outlined here, that would be an office for yourself, and is the other office for future growth? An engineer, if we, if we end up getting one?
Yes, so, so, yeah, so the twelve-by-fourteen would probably be my office space, the one in the corner down there, either way, would be for, uh, if we ever, uh, hired our own engineer on staff. Uh, and in that workstation area, that would be for if we wanted a CAD tech survey, land surveyor, um, at some point. Uh, and then, and then we have the conference room there.
So the conference room that's out there now, that is essentially would become a file area?
That is correct, that'd be the hallway over to this addition, yes.
How does this file area compare with the one you have? Because I think you're pretty maxed out right now, aren't you?
Yes, um, but we have, uh, the last year and a half or two years, we have gone through and, uh, we have scanned in a lot of our documents, um, and put them on File Director. Um, so that space should be pretty close, and we'd be able to have some room out in that large open area in there as well for, for other maps. Right now, a lot of the stuff that we still have in files, um, is larger maps that we can't scan with just a typical scanner, so. Because a lot of those are, are prints, um, project prints.
So that files area is kind of a storage area, you're saying, or?
Yes, that area there, I think, will, will probably be where we put file cabinets. Like I said, we probably have a handful of them now that we, we would use, plus we have, uh, um, if you come down to my office, I got some large areas that have large maps or flat, um, they're only about this tall, little drawers that, for each road. Um, so those are, those are things that'd be very difficult to try to scan in, I mean, we could hire it done. But, you know, that, that's something that, you know, typically I'll, you know, we look through once in a while when we're looking back on projects, uh, different road projects, uh, as far as what design was back then, if we had plans for them.
And currently, the west side of this building, it's just parking lot right now, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Does this footprint fit on the concrete pad that's there, or do they?
Yeah, so it's gonna be slightly past that concrete that's out there now, um, but it, it will fall in line very close with the, uh, there's a gate to the south of this, um, going into the backyard. It'll fall in, fall in line with the very east end of that gate, of the opening, um, but if it's gonna be an issue, we can always have that gate moved further to the west, you know?
So what's, what's next up, then?
Well, so, cost estimates are, um, one-seventy to one-hundred-and-ninety-thousand, uh, and then he figured in fifteen percent contingency for, you know, different items, uh, so we're looking, I believe the total was, what, around two-twenty was the high side?
About two-hundred-and-fifty bucks a square foot.
Yeah, and, and I know when we were, we were working with Andrew up there at ARC, Inc., and, and he said, you know, if this is something we're gonna proceed on, he just wanted, wanted you to be aware that the, the fees for architect engineering on this are gonna be probably a little out, outside of norm because this is such a small project, you know? So their fees are gonna, are gonna be, they're gonna seem out of whack, they're not in, you know, what, what normal, so if you were gonna do like a seven-million-dollar building, what, I don't know what we paid ARC, Inc. when we did the shop, but the fees are gonna be seen considerably higher, but the work still needs to be done, whether you do it with them or anybody else, so.
Right, so would you think we'd be putting out an RFP for somebody to do this, or?
That, that to me is, that would be your guys' call, if you want to RFP it, I don't, I mean, that's, if you wanted to proceed.
Did he look at our, our current structure as well out there at the time, I mean?
They built it.
Yeah, they built it, so they have all the, all the plans already.
I don't know, what are, what's the board think? As far as moving forward? Do you want to have ARC, Inc. drop some plans and then put out an RFP to see what something like this would cost to build out?
Terry, did he give you any indication of a dollar amount on the fees?
He did not say. I, I mean, I'm just, I mean, if we're at two-hundred thou, I mean, again, I, I have no idea what, what would be the norm for a project for architect engineering fees, you know, as far as building?
We could hire ARC, Inc. to do the, the design, correct, or is this it?
No, this is, this here is very high-level. This is a very high-level layout, so we had an idea.
Right, the one we're looking at is not the high level.
Yes, this is the high level. This is what we got, this is what we, John Rambaugh and I had met with, with Andrew right before New Year's, um, and then he drew this up, um, sent it out with cost estimates, uh, for what it would cost, and again, there is nothing deep inside this, this plan is very generic.
It's like what a draftsman would do.
Correct.
All right, I'm looking, I'm like, where are the windows, where are the doors, where are the?
Correct.
To me, this doesn't look very high-tech.
Right, so this is just a draft, an outline of where the footprint would be in the layout of the space.
So what would ARC, Inc. charge to do the more specific?
I, we would have to talk with them, and again, I'm, I'm assuming whatever we decide to do, I'm sure they would probably want to get us under an agreement for whatever the work you'd want to do, but we could, I don't know if he'd give us a, just say, hey, what are you gonna charge us to, what, do you full design, do you, I don't, how far?
That's what I'd like to know, is what will they charge to do the full design? We can decide if we want to hire them to do that design, and then we would probably need to put it out for RFP for the actual build-out.
Okay, I can get back with Andrew.
If that makes sense.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
So this would be a, like a steel building addition, I mean?
We never really got into that.
Okay.
But I would assume it'd match the existing building, so...
Commissioner Poppins?
Have you had a chance by chance to visit with the previous contractor that erected the building?
No.
If this was my project, I would see if they have in-house engineering that can make this modification. The cost, if they do have that, would be substantially less than hiring an outside firm to do the engineering to do this.
Okay.
So I would ask that you maybe reach out to them and see if they have such services. Because this is extremely simplistic, and that's why the cost for what they're doing is going to be through the roof. So just in the essence of trying to save taxpayer money.
Yep.
I'm not saying it's possible, but if they have that service, have that person that can do the, you know, the engineering for this, it would be, I would believe, a substantial cost savings, so...
Okay, I can make contact with them.
Thank you.
So...
All right.
Is that the step, the next step, then? Make contact with them and see what they're at? Or do we want, you want me to still ask Arc Inc. for a price for a full design out?
Well, I'd like to have more information than less, so if they're willing to do that, I think...
All right.
That makes sense. At least make us a proposal, so we'd have some idea.
Okay, I can do both.
Thanks, Terry.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else?
Thank you.
No.
All right, thanks.
I'd consider a motion to adjourn.
Do you want to adjourn or recess?
We're going to recess to tonight's joint meeting.
Oh.
I would offer a motion to recess.
All right.
I retract my motion.
All right, I'm going to ask...
Offer a motion for an executive session.
Thank you.
And, Madam Chair, could I make a comment to you about that?
Sure.
I just want to let you and the public know that I think there was a radio station that put out that tonight's meeting was to occur in Sioux Falls at Carnegie Hall. Just so the public is aware, our meeting is right here in Kent, in Lincoln County.
Oh, it is, because that's what I saw, was that it was going to be at Carnegie Hall.
Right, it's here.
So it's here, and so I've got, I've been getting those vibes that there's some confusion about it. The meeting is here tonight.
At seven PM, correct?
Correct.
Okay, well, thank you for that clarification.
I know who it was, but I'm not going to call him out.
Well, Madam Chair, I'd again offer a motion to go into executive session under...
Contracts.
Contracts.
All right.
Second.
Thank you. Sherri, we call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes. Motion to come out of executive session, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Sherri, you call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes. Consider, well, we're not going to adjourn. I need a motion to recess until seven o'clock tonight.
Don't move, Madam Chair.
Second.
Thank you. Sherri, you call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes. So we'll be in recess. Is everybody planning on making it tonight?
Seven o'clock? Yes.
Yes.
All right.